Open our meeting. And we'll have, uh, Zachariah? Zaraya. Zaraya, if you'll do the invocation, and Mr. Turner will do the pleasurable allegiance.
Everybody by the heads. Father, we thank you for this time of joining together. We thank you for the spirit of collaboration. We thank you for the spirit to understand that everything we do here is for all the citizens of Putnam County as a whole, not just the city of Palacka, not just the citizens of the county, but as Putnam County as a whole. Allow us to come together on issues where we may not have an understanding, but allow us to be able to see the silver lining within every issue that we face tonight, that we understand that we're all trying to move Putnam County to the place that it needs to be, not just the city of Palacka, not just Putnam County, but for every citizen that is represented by each and every one of us in here today. We love each other, we care for each other. I believe that every man's desire is to see another man be what it is that they've been called to be. And so for that to occur, we pray, we bless you right now, for your wisdom, for your peace, that it be prevalent in this place. In your precious name, we pray, amen.
Please join me in the pledge. A pledge to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Either one.
Yes, Mayor Hill?
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Present.
Mr. Boer?
Present.
Mr. Campbell?
Present.
Mr. McCaskill?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Would you like for us to call roll for the Board of County Commissioners, sir?
Sure, sir.
Okay, Chairman Buddy Goddard?
Here.
Commissioner Turner?
Here.
Commissioner Harvey?
Here.
Commissioner Pickens?
Here.
And Commissioner Lible?
Here.
Thank you.
All present and accounted for.
Next, we're gonna move into public comment, public comments.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. We did not put it on the agenda, so it's our fault. Can we get a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
Blue approval.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approved.
Thanks for moving to item number two on the agenda, which is public comment. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. No action will be taken on topics of discussion. If there's anyone here who wishing to speak during public comment, please fill out the blue speaker cards there in the back of the room, and designate which item you want to speak on. You have three minutes to speak on that item, and no action will be taken on the items on which you speak on. Is there anyone here for public comment at this time? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment.
Okay, all right. So, we'll start with a, meandering boundaries and enclaves. Does anyone wanna open on this?
Mr. Chair, I think it, um, this, we had a brief discussion about this. Mr. Griffith, would you like to join us at the podium, sir? And let's revisit our conversation, uh, previous conversation from last week.
Jonathan Griffith, Public Works Director, City of Palacka. Uh, yes, myself, the city manager, county administrator, and the deputy county administrator met to discuss the enclaves. We did an analysis of the current enclaves, which are completely encompassed by the city's boundary. There's about two or three of them, smaller ones within the city limits, where we are providing about ninety percent of the residents with water, and a smaller percentage with sewer. We have discussed with the county public works regarding revising our interlocal agreement, and we believe we'll be bringing back a draft agreement to both the city and county to take into consideration how those enclaves are serviced. Anything else I should cover, sir?
Nope, I believe that's just it. That was a conversation that we had. So there is, uh, there has been communication, there has been thought process. Uh, the city manager, Mr. Folsen, myself, and staff got together and discussed it, and I think, uh, what we'll do between now and the next joint session, if it meets the consensus of the commission, is come back with some type of plan, uh, and some type of idea of where we might want to be looking, type of services, enclaves, and things of that nature that might be beneficial to both the county as well as the city. Is that correct?
I think that was consensus, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Mr. Griffith, I thought when we first met, you know, probably a year and a half ago, in our last meeting, I thought the idea for the meandering boundaries and the enclaves were to shore up the city of Palacka's boundaries, um, and identify areas that the city would more or less not just provide services, but keep us out of being in the county and in the city seven or eight times going down St. John's Avenue. Am I, was I wrong in thinking that, or?
And no, sir, that's, that's what I was referencing, is that those areas, as, and St. John's Avenue is a perfect example, you can drive St. John's Avenue and pass through about two of those areas that are completely surrounded by the city's boundary but are in the county, and we already have essential services being provided in those areas, and it just leads to confusion for public service and public safety. And that's what we're looking to address with the revised interlocal agreement that we'd bring back before both of you, the city and county boards.
So it just wouldn't be based on services, it might be a total new city map of some sort in the future?
Yes, sir, and I think Mr. Folsen may wanna speak to what we refer to as the urban service area. Right now, we're just speaking to the enclave areas to kinda shore up our boundaries, but there are some areas that are on the perimeter of the city that we would basically not consider rural, where we are providing sewer and water, that it may be ideal for the city and the county to agree on an urban service area boundary, and also agree on what services the county provides, and what service the city provides within that area.
Also, if I could add in Commissioner Harvey, I would have to agree with that, and one of the things is, we would love for you guys to consider, if I am reading where I think you wanna go with this, is to shore up those enclaves, those areas where they are all the way surrounded by the city, but also deal with the urban services area and bring that back all to you at one, one fell swoop. That way, we can deal with water, wastewater, possibly even trash, if that's something you guys wanna consider. Also, keep in mind, though, when we start talking about dealing with those enclaves, that we may need to consider gas taxes as well, because we do have roads that we would be taking on, that currently, right now, you guys are getting funding from those roads, because they are in the county. So, I would agree with where I think you're going, I don't wanna speak for you, but I think you're going is bringing back a map that's all encompassing of those enclaves, and all encompassing of those service areas, service, urban service areas, so that we can have one clear concise map that you guys can discuss.
Exactly, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I yield the floor.
Well, would that also include the police and services and county?
Definitely.
Deputy service as well? Would that, would that include the police?
That will be dependent upon the level of service of the urban boundaries that we decide, that, that would be a, uh, agreeable between both the city and county commission. Uh, the, there's a, uh, you know, we're gonna have to really take a serious, hard, careful look at the services that are provided because of the benefit and the cost of each one of those services, and we're gonna, we're gonna have to do a very serious analysis on that. Uh, when we get to that point, there'll be a lot more people to have discussions, such as the chief of police, sheriff's office, and things of that nature. We need to look at the, uh, the services that we provide first, such as the, uh, road maintenance, water, wastewater, garbage, those things, and then we can have those conversations as well, but I don't wanna get too far ahead of it, but yeah, I mean, all of it will be, it, it, you know, we'll certainly bring back some options to you.
I would think that all of it really need to be considered, and then it's phased in as, as we do the analysis or whatever. I think that would probably be the best approach, but that's just my point.
So, if I can add, if, if that is consensus of this body, um, I would like for you guys to move us in that direction, because to go with what county administrator said, I would like to come back with something more comprehensive. I mean, I, I would like to come back with something that has more feet to it than something that's just at thirty thousand feet. I think we've been at thirty thousand feet before, I think we need to start lowering it, so we can start getting more down into the details of what we need to do in terms of moving forward. So I would love to get some direction on it, so we can come back with some more concrete numbers jointly with the county, um, so you guys have a better picture of what you need to be able to do, and what you're gonna be looking at from a service capacity area, as well as from a revenue standpoint as well, for the county and for the city.
I think the first thing is, I mean, we continue to keep, we just keep having the same conversation as if the topic's gonna move somewhere differently if you say it three times. It's time to put the map in place, or at least to bring a map in, so that we can start to say yea or nay to certain areas. The low hanging fruit had been identified a year ago. The study has been in everyone's hands. But it's time for us to stop talking and start doing. And we can talk about it as long as we want, but until we actually put something in place so that we can actually do a cost benefit analysis on both sides, it makes no sense. I wholeheartedly agree with Mr. Folsen, that we, that the time has come for us to look at it, to analyze it, but also to have that map and come back for the next meeting, because if we're gonna continually talk and address what urban service boundaries are, squaring boundaries off, dealing with low hanging fruit that are enclaves, we've done that, this is the third meeting, um, and so it's time to actually put something forward. We know what the issues are, we know where the areas are, and we know what makes the most sense, so that we no longer have two police agencies and two fire departments coming to the same place. And if we've got areas where we provide water and sewer, then those areas make sense for us to provide additional services, it's just a matter of how do we make the money work.
Well, Mr. Chair, with, with that consensus, it's, it sounds like we are, we have a project to work on, so the only thing that we need to do is as staff, as county administrator and city, the city manager, we need to get together and, and figure out who's doing what on this project, so we're not duplicating services or, or, or efforts, and make sure that everybody's on the same page, and that we're all working together on it, and we'll, we'll come up with a, with a plan.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Turner?
What happens is, when these, um, these parcels are identified, if the people that own the parcels don't want to be in the city. I mean, I haven't, I've heard this twice now, and I haven't heard that question answered.
You know, and I, Commissioner Turner, I can't give you an answer here tonight, uh, you know, it's gonna be a, uh, you know, it's one of those things that we're, we'll have to put a, a plan together, and we'll come, come back to you folks with, with what it is that we're looking at as far as services and boundaries and that nature, and then we'll have to, uh, start working the other side of that, uh, that, that coin, which is, okay, how are we gonna make this work? How are we gonna do this? Are we gonna do it by interlocal, are we gonna do it by, uh, by municipal service boundary districts, or are we gonna do it by annexation? We'll have some choices we'll have to decide on, on how we move forward with this. And, uh, and I'm quite confident that our citizens out there are educated enough to understand that there's gonna be a, a cost benefit for each one of them when we make this decision, so we have to be very careful and make sure that we educate those folks along, you know, as soon as we come up with a, with a plan.
Well, I appreciate that answer, it still didn't answer the question. I don't see, uh, most, it's my understanding that most of the, or a good deal amount of the people that are, um, are in these enclaves are well aware of the issue, and they have no interest whatsoever of being in the city, and I don't know if we have, or the city, I don't know, because I'm no attorney, I have no idea that the, if the city can force annex them or not.
Yes, sir, I'll, I'll lead, I'll lead that up to the attorneys, but, you know, there'll be, there'll be some options out there, and I can't answer your question directly on how we would approach that, it would have to, we'll have to look at the options that are available to us at that time, but I couldn't, I can't sit here tonight and tell you if we're gonna annex or not, I wished I could, but I just can't, but I understand, I haven't heard the first one complain either, so I don't know how we, how we would approach that yet.
Well, don't you think maybe perhaps we should start there, because if we can't do anything about it, we're just wasting our time looking at the areas.
That's why we're having this conversation tonight, and I appreciate that viewpoint.
We've, I, I, and I, and I guess I would beg to differ, because there's still a lot of people who don't know whether they're in the city or the county, period. Um, and we're looking at garbage cans to figure it out, even when it comes to, um, services, elections, you take, for example, the area by Lemon Heights, um, you've almost gotta tell people whether they're in the city or the county. You've got to look at, you've gotta look at the garbage cans just to determine, you have two agencies out there. It's a lot of folks that don't know, particularly up and down St. John's Avenue, I don't think it's a matter of election, but when you're talking urban service boundaries, you're not talking forced annexation. And I think that's where the first conversation starts out. The, the initial conversation isn't forced annexation, the initial conversation is to talk about what services will be provided, and squaring those boundaries. When we get into a situation of pre-annexation agreements and all the other stuff, it's gonna be further down the line. But I think the first thing you gotta do is identify the potential areas, and once you've identified the areas that are gonna be, um, that are gonna be addressed, then you get into a situation of actually sending out surveys, doing some other things, talking to the people within the communities, and going from there. But if you don't identify growth potential, then you're just wasting your time and spinning your wheels.
Ms. Brown?
I was gonna say that we probably need to do some education to folks before, do education to people, because, um, we've never done it, we've talked about annexing people in, and when people come in and get water from us, when they have problems, we let them have water, but we tell them, when they're contiguous, they have to come into the city when they get sewer, and they come in then. But there are benefits with fire insurance, and fire protection, and a bunch of things. And I think if we start the educating our folks on some of the benefits, and they see we got two garbage pickups to the counties, one, I think some of them will look at some of those benefits and, and feel like it's a good deal for them to, to come. We've just got to work it.
Okay, so I think-
Chair, can I, can I, can I just-
I think what we're doing right now is we are going, what we're gonna do is map out the boundaries, and we can hash the rest of this out later. I think what we need to do is first, let's get a general idea what the mapping of the boundaries are be. Right now, we're just, in essence, kicking the can around. Let's, let's, let's move on that, and then we'll bring it up at the next meeting.
Would you like us to bring back, excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Would you like the county attorney to bring back to you a very brief synopsis of your options as far as annexation is concerned?
I believe that'd be great. Any, uh, comments on that?
Yes, I think Mayor Hill had it right with the urban service boundaries first, not the boundary lines. I think he got the wagon before the horse.
You're, you're probably-
Zaraya, will you please bring that mic right in front of you, next to your left there? There you go. Thank you. Um, yes, that's very important. There's gotta be a beneficial, uh, monetary value to both county and city people, and that's gonna include, um, taxes. Everything has to get real close to even before our constituency will even begin to swallow this. I mean, there's, there's no way, unless, you know, it's, it's equal, you know?
And I wasn't suggesting a position paper that advocated annexation, I was simply suggesting that we bring you the facts on what was involved in a potential annexation.
Understood.
So, and to go to your point, Commissioner Lible, and, and I wanna make sure I'm clear too, and what Don is saying is correct, we was just bringing back, based on what I thought Commissioner Harvey was going, tools in the toolbox. We're not recommending what tool you pull out this time, but we just wanted to bring back a toolbox with all these different tools in it at one time for you guys to consider. I would agree with the mayor, my mayor, in that annexation is not something that's on the table for us right now, that I believe in terms of promoting that first. The first thing would just be urban services. But in an effort to bring back all the tools at one time, to not keep re-going back and forth, I think what Don is suggesting, and we're suggesting, is we bring back all the tools in the toolbox, and then you guys decide which tools you wanna pull out at that time.
Well, that's a fair approach. I could entertain that.
Some of the negatives associated with some of those tools may make them, uh, essentially impractical, impractical for you to use. I mean, that's, that was my point, is you may look at some of those tools and look at the negative consequences, and simply suggest or determine that that's just not an option. We're going a long way towards discussing what you might do, I guess I'm chiming in with Commissioner Turner, it might help if you understood what the practicalities were of, of the use of some of those tools that we're talking about.
Okay, yeah, I think-
If you can bring that back to you, then you can do with it as you will.
I would certainly appreciate it, Mr. Chairman.
So, just for clarification, for, for staffing, uh, we've, we've went a long way on this conversation, from starting with looking at the urban services boundaries from a thirty thousand foot, to bringing back a detailed list of all services that may or may not be included in that, uh, so that we can move forward in a, an efficient manner. Uh, you know, we're looking at bringing back a, a, a map of the boundary service areas that we're considering, uh, bringing back with the assistance of both the city and county attorney, the options available to you for those properties included in that, that boundary service area. Are we still wanting, prior to getting that information, are you folks still wanting us to go ahead and get down into the details as far as level of service, cost of service for, for water, sewer, garbage, road maintenance, police, fire, and all that? Or do you want us to bring you back those boundary services areas with your potential of how you're gonna make that fit, before we, before we put out that further effort?
Bring it all back, and then we'll fit.
Well, that's easy to say, but I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page, 'cause that's gonna be a lot of detail and a lot of information, and just wanna make sure staff is aware of that.
That's good, that's why we got two staffs working.
Okay, and does the city have a city planner that's gonna be able to assist us in these urban service boundary maps? Because we're gonna have to be able to, to work, work together on this.
We got staff that's more than capable of assisting you in working on it right now.
Okay. Mr. Lible?
Um, I think Mr. Holmes is right, it's, uh, we're gonna have to have, the benefit of consolidation has to show up in this first round, or the public is just not gonna swallow the pill. I don't believe it. Um, but if you, if you're bold enough to go in and talk seriously about consolidation, there are savings for both, a city resident and a county resident, and I think that's crucial in this initial phase of this discussion. Come on, no comment?
Well, not only is it saving, but it's also services. You're, you're providing the services that the citizens so, so need, I mean, that's what we're looking at.
Well, I, I'm not afraid to go there. I mean, we, we have to look at the snapshot, see if we like it or not.
We're, we're well ahead of curve, we already have a study that addresses the enclaves, and that study's been in place for a while, the study's been updated, so it's not as if we're just starting from, from scratch. So, um, that's, and it, it addressed a lot of the things that we're talking about now. The rest of it is just putting the rest of the pieces together. I mean, we haven't just started this, this conversation's been around for longer than we all existed.
Yep.
And so it's time that we actually put some feet to the fire.
We've gotta consider too, some of the environmental impacts, such as the legislature when they come back, which they're poised to do, on the septic tank conversation on the county side, that is gonna confront us in the very near future. But we're gonna have to come up with sewer systems, and then as we grow to the west, water also, and I, you know, do we build another plant, or we, do we piggyback off the city and make it beneficial to both? it beneficial to both? I think consolidation would be good for all of us.
We've got the capacity, so.
Right now, I, I think what we're gonna do is just, we're, we're gonna bring in the bound, the maps and our two attorneys are gonna bring in what we can and can't do, I believe.
Anything else added to that? Cause that's plenty.
Good.
Okay, and then we'll, we'll bring it up at the next meeting. Any other comments before I close this?
You know, I'd, I would like to, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind.
Go ahead, Mr. Harvey.
You know, ever since I've been here, I've, and I know it would, this would be a heavy lift and I, and I realize that. But we have municipalities throughout the county that provide services and then the county provides services. And I wish there was some way and maybe the conversation needs to start happening and it might very well happen when we get these options back. But how can we reduce our property taxes on the county side when municipalities are handling most of the services? And I think that would be where I'd like to end the conversation one day is for us to say, I would like to lower the millage across the board and allow these municipalities who have the services there to run their municipality. You know, um, now there's some things we have to do. We provide courthouse and we provide records and things in that nature. Provide backup with sheriff's department and backup with fire. But a lot of these places, say the town of Polackin has, you know, four, four police officers, you know, it's more than adequate to handle the town of Polackin. So I think we could land, we start here, but I'd like to land, make that a goal is for us to reduce our property taxes in order to help the municipalities out. So, there.
Okay.
Probably took the oxygen out of the room, but it did.
You did? And, uh, no more comment? I'm gonna close this. Do you have a comment?
Well, just one, one last comment about the municipalities and how the city of Palaca pretty much absorbs all of the, uh, whether it's county, school board, or whoever, um, nonprofits, churches, or whatever, we absorb pretty much quite a bit. Everybody's pretty much centralized in Palaca, so the city of Palaca's really, um, absorbing quite a, quite a bit of, um, taxes that we're not getting. So if you wanna think about that and share some of that, well, we'll be happy to take it. Thanks.
Moving on to item B, St. John's Avenue.
All right. Russ, you any, do any, have any good news for St. John's Avenue?
All right, Jonathan, I guess you guys should come up together, save time.
The portion from nineteen to Ziegler, we're working right now to get that resurfaced and at the interim till we can get the major project done, which is the relocation, rebuilding the water main and all. And we've been working with Jonathan, putting together municipal SCOP grant to do the other section, the east side of St. John's Avenue, and I think we got that pretty much put together for you. That's what we're saying on St. John's.
Okay, do we have any holdups right now?
Not that I'm aware of.
That's, that's what I wanted to hear.
No, we're, we're, we're good. I mean, we're getting the quotes right now to get, to get it resurfaced.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, what, what is your timeframe that you're looking at right now? If you just had, I realize you don't have it in, in a hard schedule yet, but what would you estimate your timeframe being?
Hopefully we can get that done here in the next, uh, several months, next few months. I mean, we're, we're doing our resurfacing contract right now. The, the board just approved that and our contractor assigned, we gave him those to proceed and he's starting to do all resurfacing and that's gonna be part of it.
At our last meeting, I think you had made the comment that, uh, that the city had a water grant, uh, some type of a water grant to go in there and change all the water lines?
Yes, sir.
If that's the case, are we gonna just resurface it and then dig all the roads right back up again?
Well, that's what we talked about. We're probably three or four years away, if not longer, before the grant money, everything we're going to do to total rebuild the St. John's with the water main, relocate, relocate that. We're looking at some major drainage issues and it was decided by the board that we didn't wanna wait five years with the road with the condition it's in. So we said, we'll go ahead and resurface it now with the understanding, we'll do the minimal amount of resurfacing we can do to make it a drivable road, knowing that it's basically a throwaway project and we'll completely redo the road when we have all the grant funding in place for the water main, the drainage and everything.
Yeah, I remember the conversation. It seemed to me like we were gonna do repairs. I just didn't know we were gonna do that extent of repairs to completely resurface that whole area.
We looked at doing like a leveling course and doing repairs and it wasn't much difference. Go ahead and resurface the whole thing.
I got you. Thank you.
Other questions? In, in the future, are we looking to expand, um, to add a third lane into St. John's Avenue corridor?
I think we're looking at that now with, with, we're trying to get a consultant on board to go through all that, but we are gonna look at all, all aspects of it and see what we need to do to move traffic through there faster.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Harvey?
Mr. Tompkins, I've always been in support of trying to get this project at one time. You know that and I think I've, everybody in the world should know that by now. What really would it take for us if, let's just say that it, the goose laid the golden egg and we were able to do it? What kinda money are we talking about to do? Now, and I wanna back up to where College Road is because I think from Ziegler to the College, we're okay. It's just when we get from the College Road to Z, no, I'm sorry, from nineteen to the College, we're okay. But from the College to Ziegler, that's the drainage problem, that's the pipe problem. What are we, what kinda monies are we really talking about right there? And how can we think outside the box to get? Cause I wanna get this done once. I don't wanna resurface, like you just said, throwaway. I wanna do it once and be done. So tell me how to get this done.
Well, we, we're trying to do that. I think Jonathan, I think your water line estimate was what? Eight hundred?
Actually, it was closer to around five or six hundred.
Five or six hundred thousand, just for the water main work. We're looking also, we're, we're dealing with some of the agencies about getting some money to do a complete drainage study, that area, so we don't go through what we went through the last hurricane with the, uh, health clinic there that we won't go through that. So we're looking at a complete master plan of the drainage of that area. We're looking at resurfacing the road. We're looking at re, you know, putting in probably, um, some bike lanes. The sidewalks need to be run, done. So we're looking, I'm gonna use just a, a ballpark figure. We could be looking, easier to look at three to five million to do what you want done one time.
Well, I, I'm not so sure I can, we can afford the Cadillac. It might be time for us to really look at what we can afford to do here. Not saying the Cadillacs are that expensive, I'm just saying. So maybe the bike path can't happen. Maybe, the main thing is, let's keep the main thing, the main thing. The main thing is the water line, the drainage and the road.
That is correct.
So if we can do those three and the piping's five hundred thousand, drainage, that should be, we should be able to shoot that pretty simple.
Well, the drainage is fairly complicated in that area. We've already taken some, some preliminary studies at it and it's, it's, it's not as easy you think it is because we got some rather flat areas to deal with. We got some other areas where they built retention ponds that were not interconnected. That was part of the problem we had before. So we're looking at trying to connect that whole drainage area, College, Ziegler, the Z, uh, health clinic, all the way, that whole area and get it to a positive outfall to get it to drain properly. And it, it's, it's quite an extensive study to do that.
But right now, some of those businesses are actually pumping water out of their retention ponds into our so-called ditch, if you will, which isn't much of a ditch. And it's working, so what could we do to make it be better?
Well, that's what we're trying to do. I mean, they're doing that on their own, which I applaud them for doing that.
Right, right, right.
Anytime we have a predicted rain event, they're pumping their retention ponds down in anticipation of it.
Sure.
Uh, so they don't overflow and, and cause problems they had before. But, uh, some of these questions, I just, I don't really have the answers because we're in a preliminary study, trying to get you answers for that now.
I understand. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield the full.
Okay. Any other comments? Thank you. Okay, we'll move to the business park. Now. Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll take the lead on that one for now, if you don't mind. Okay. As you know, we've been working on this for quite a while, um, uh, both the city and the counties, uh, planning departments, as well as the city and the county attorneys. Uh, so where we're at with that right now is that we have submitted our, uh, some paperwork over to the city. Hopefully, uh, we've dotted our i's and crossed our t's and the city will have an opportunity to review that same paperwork and see if it fits for them as well. As, you know, with them, uh, not having a, a plan in the time, I believe Mr. Holmes is gonna, uh, take a look at it and, uh, we'll, we'll work together on trying to get that taken care of and, and bring that back. We are much closer than we were three months ago, uh, which is a, a, a good thing. And I'm hoping that we'll be able to, uh, review this and hopefully to meet, meet, uh, the standards for both the city and the county and we'll bring this back at the, uh, once we get it off, uh, we get it back, we'll take it to both the city and county commissions and hopefully get this off our plate in the near future.
Does that documentation include plating?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
It also includes the, uh, everything that goes with infrastructure, as well as the drainage plan and all from St. John's River Water Management District. So I believe we got a pretty comprehensive plan that is, uh, ready for review and, and we'll make sure it gets reviewed and, and we'll move forward with it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Harvey.
Mr. Suggs, I heard you just mentioned to the mayor that it includes plating. As you know, I'm not a big fan of plating the business park, uh, only because I think we should have the services run. I think we should have money in a strike fund for somebody to come in. But what if Mr. so-and-so wants to have seven point five acres and we have everything platted at five acres? I think my point is, I'd rather be ready to be on a strike position and say, I'm not really that concerned about plating an area. I'd rather build around your need.
That is the, that is the attempt of what it is that we're trying to accomplish is so that we have all the information there as far as the requirements for, uh, for stormwater runoff and our, and our permitting with St. John's. But the plating part of it, if someone wants to come in and particularly buy seven acres as opposed to the five that are there, we'll able to accomplish that and be able to accommodate that, uh, with the new plan. Thank you, sir. Any other comments?
I guess my question is for Commissioner Harvey. Um, along the lines of your concerns, um, the chamber indicated that it created some issues for them with prospective businesses coming in without having the plating in place. Um, have you had any discussions with them as to how it would impact them by not plating the area if we were to use your plan?
But I've heard about the opposite, so I heard that would be more advantageous to. But, I mean, they're not here to say and...
They said at last meeting.
Okay. Well, I mean, whatever helps our business community out, I'm all for it. I just, you know, I don't wanna make it so difficult that a developer comes in and has to buy based on the fact that you only have five and five and you gotta buy ten. Sorry. You know, I wanna be a little bit more flexible when that. But Mr. Suggs has assured me that that would be more flexible, so we could possibly do that, correct?
Yeah, absolutely. There you go. So I'm looking at my attorney's going, uh, please chime in.
The mic was so far away, I didn't know. It's a lot of work. Just kidding. Um, no, the, the agreement that we sent over, um, it, it doesn't, it, it doesn't call for an initial plot of the business park. It calls for flexibility, um, in going forward. When, when we have folks that, that want a, a chunk of land, five acres, ten acres, two acres, whatever it may be, it gives both of these legislative bodies the opportunity, um, um, to basically carve out, um, those chunks. And those chunks could, you know, then be plotted or they, they could be handled, um, in any number of different ways to develop. Um, and at the time that, that those businesses would be coming in for development, um, then the, uh, required infrastructure would be addressed at that time with, as, as Commissioner Harvey was saying, with a, kind of a, a, a strike force fund, um, to, to get it in the ground quickly to accommodate that development.
Commissioner Turner?
Um, most of what he just said was what I was gonna touch on, but we also don't need to lose sight of the fact there's another elephant in this room. And it's the, we need to make sure during this interlocal agreement that the city's landscape ordinance doesn't apply to the business park at the level that applies everywhere else. Because basically the last person that came in and decided they wanted to try and get a lot, the first thing that was told to them was they needed a, um, survey on the trees where they'd know how many trees they had to put back in there. So, I mean, I, I'm not saying that's good or bad on, on regular projects, but it's not good in a business park. It just runs them straight out of town, so.
But I, I think there may be some, some new interpretations coming with the land development code in the future. Um, so there's a new day and with new days, we come up with new starts.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll close that. We'll move to other interlocal agreements. Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Uh, again, I'll, I'll take the lead on this. Uh, as you know, we've been talking with the county, at the county here quite a bit now about interlocal agreements with all of our municipalities. We have, uh, one that, uh, we have currently entered into recently with the city of Palaca and that was to provide the, uh, uh, building inspection services for, uh, for the city of Palaca. Uh, and from my conversations, uh, with the county staff, as well as city staff and, and with the city manager, that, that seems to be going really well. And, uh, so, you know, we'd like to, um, you know, tell that a little bit for both sides of the fence because I think it's going extremely well. Uh, and Mr. Powell's here, he can talk about that as well. And then, of course, the other one is, is a thing that is very hot topic for us right now. I appreciate Chief Shaw, uh, reaching out to us as well. Um, in the city of Palaca, Chief Shaw has animal control. And, uh, you know, we all here at the county understand animal control quite well these days. And so one of the, uh, discussions that we'll be moving forward and, and working with the city is an interlocal agreement on animal services. And so, uh, those are two things that we're, we'll be currently working on and, uh, and see where we're at and, and we'll bring something back to you in the near future on that. But, but if Kevin would like to, and I'm, Kevin, I'm not gonna bring you up for animal control, sir. You've had enough of that today. But I would like for you to come up and, and share, if you would, uh, a little bit about how things are going in the building services department with, uh, with the county and the city.
Yeah, you think we could have the five-minute version?
Absolutely.
Instead of the two-hour version?
Absolutely. I think, uh, things are going very well in the city, uh, between the, uh, county and the city, since we've, uh, taken over inspection services and building official services for them. Uh, we're turning out plans, uh, pretty much within a week, which is a really good turnaround. Got some, uh, commercial projects coming in within the city. Uh, just gonna have the new racetrack gas station, uh, coming in. Uh, so I, uh, I, I really feel things are going well with the, uh, county doing the in, inspections with the city.
Any comments?
That was a three-minute version. That was even better.
All right. Well, seeing none, we'll move to tourism. Uh, festivals, community events? This one, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna defer to the city because I believe it's a, one of the things we probably need to talk about is Blue Crab. Uh, is there any, is, is there, Mr. Mayor, is there any conversation that we need to have on that aspect as far as future events or anything that you'd like to have tonight or?
Blue Crab still remains a, a nonprofit organization, which puts on a festival on an annual basis on Memorial Day weekend. They've had their financial challenges. Um, they received ten thousand dollars in additional funding from TDC, uh, a couple weeks ago. Um, to my knowledge, it's their intent to continue on with the festival. Um, our biggest concern is just the fact that, um, thirty years later, we find ourselves in a position where, um, that the viability of the festival, the sustainability of the festival is, is at question. Uh, it's by far, um, if not the largest event in this community. It's at least the most notable event in the community. Um, and I, I think that, um, there has to be some conscious thought, um, particularly from us with the city, from the city side, as to, um, what goes on from there. There are a couple organizations who are kinda waiting, um, to see exactly what happens with the festival in the future. Um, and we, we're trying to do what we can to assist them in making sure that the Blue Crab Festival becomes a part of, continues to be a part of this county.
Man, it's quiet.
Now, if the, now if the county wants to volunteer, you know, a hundred thousand dollars in seed money or something else, then, you know, we can talk about some additional festivals. But other than that, I think we stay the course.
Obviously, we're gonna stay the course.
Mr. Chairman, I just would like to...
Mayor Hill, in your estimate, what is, uh, cheaper, the ten thousand dollar, uh, donation or the, um, uh, services such as garbage and other things related to the festival and your overtime, um, pay? What, where we come out?
The services provided are much more than the ten thousand dollars that came from TDC. Um, the services are much more than the fifteen thousand dollars that they're charged. Um, and so that, that's a no-brainer. Um, I, I think we do everything we can, um, to provide viable options, to reduce costs for Blue Crab Festival and really any other festival that comes into the city. Um, but there's a cost of doing business and it, and what's been happening is our departments are absorbing the cost of a lot of these festivals. The folks who run festivals, um, trying to be, um, for lack of any other term, a good host, um, for festivals that we really don't have any skin in the game on. And so, um, you know, you know, we find ourselves in many cases losing money on a lot of these events from the city side, just because we're providing more services than what they're being paid, that are being paid for based upon the way our schedule, our payment schedules were set up for special events.
That's where we probably need to have more, uh, conversation on what, what its origins were, um, in the beginning. And I don't think it was such a liability on the city in those days. We've dropped about, an old estimate was a half million dollars into the street that day, but is it making its way at least a partial of that back to City Hall in the way of sales tax revenue or vendors collecting the sales tax and, and, uh, sending it to the state and then back to the city? Um, I mean, we really need, there's a problem somewhere with this.
I dare to say, no, we don't. Um, I, I, I think more than anything, it benefits the merchants, the local merchants in the community. Um, it benefits the community by having, um, people who may not necessarily come in and visit, come into the community. But as far as being with financial benefit to the, to City Hall, it's not, it's not that type benefit. The residual benefits outweigh that benefit.
Well, the TDC certainly enhances its fund with the overnight stays, the heads and beds. And, um, there gotta be other revenue streams that we're just not counting or, uh, created yet. I mean, at one time, it was really revered, uh, as an asset and I, and I share your concerns and I have the same concerns, but how do we right the ship? I'd like to see the two organizations you just mentioned be involved, uh, for this year, two thousand eighteen, so they could clearly see where some of these, uh, opportunities might lie.
We've, we've provided, I mean, we've asked, um, to get an opportunity to look at, um, some of the financial documents of the organizations. Um, they've declined to do so, um, for whatever reasons they have, it's their option. Um, but, but we tend to believe that, um, we can provide some additional insight to them to help increase profitability. And we also think that there may be an opportunity because what we see with Blue Crab is a small committee of three or four people trying to put on that festival and it hasn't evolved. The, the, their board hasn't evolved in the same manner that the festivals evolve. And, you know, they can benefit from additional, um, buy-in from the community as a whole, but it, it seems as though their efforts are not geared, um, necessarily towards the, the, the local businesses. Their efforts are geared towards out-of-town businesses coming into the community, um, by way of being vendors. And, and I think that's part of the issue. It's no longer a, a Palaca event. It's an event that brings people to Palaca and that's different.
Well, the founders of the festival back in the day, if I can, the proceeds and a, a big por, portion of the proceeds were to go to the city of Palaca for, uh, amenities like an amphitheater cover, where we, the thunderstorms in the summer wouldn't ruin our concert series and this sort of thing. It was very community-oriented and I, I don't know what happened along the way. I think lack of transparency, as you just mentioned, probably, um, is, is the main problem. We have to be transparent, but to not be able to, uh, accept an audit request from the city of Palaca is, is a no. I mean, it, that's, that's standard business. But I, I would love to see that festival back to its glory and benefiting the city primarily. I really would. So I, I, I don't know what the answer is, but that's something I think that we ought to, um, pursue jointly, maybe. Mr. Suggs, is that what you had in mind?
That's...
Without committing the county at all?
Absolutely. I think, yeah. Yes, sir, that, that fits perfectly. Absolutely.
No, okay.
Hard to ask for the books without skinning the game.
No, I was, that was, I was only kidding. I, I think that we should be players in this, but at the same time, we've gotta come out with some house rules and, and pretty much start over if we're gonna save this festival and bring it back to its glory. We really do.
If, if I could, Mr. Chairman, there's a lot of events that go on in, in Putnam County, Palaca. You know, we have, uh, uh, multiple, multiple fishing tournaments that go on throughout the year. We're, we're known for those type of events. Wilson's puts on the largest single-day event in the country. Here it's four hundred-plus boats. Uh, you, you know, we have all those things happening and we have the Veterans Day, we have the Christmas Parade, we have all those events that happen, but you mentioned Blue Crab and, and everybody knows who Blue Crab is. And, um, you know, that's one of the reasons why I thought we were gonna put it on the agenda tonight, because we need to do whatever we can, both on the city side and the county side, to, to foster whatever, uh, relationship we can with whoever may want to take that particular event over. If, if the same folks wanna do it or if a civic, uh, group wants to do it, uh, I think we need to, uh, let them know how much we appreciate that event and what it does for our community and, and, and stand strong behind them and do what we can to support them.
Well, could we, we, uh, entertain a visioning meeting between the two bodies and the public and maybe some of the, the different civic clubs you're mentioning? I mean, just an open meeting, brainstorming meeting to see who might be interested in, um, coming to the table on this?
I think that's the next... I think that's an excellent opportunity to get that done. Absolutely. I think we can do that, uh, for sure.
Mayor Hill?
I, I think if you do that, I mean, and with all due respect, you have to invite the Blue Crab Committee in.
Oh, absolutely.
And, you know, and, and get their input. And I would say you, you reach out to them first to see if that's even something that they're open to. I mean, it's a 30-year, it's a 30-year-old festival. Um, at the end of the day, um, they've done it without, um, much investment from the governmental side, other than in-kind contributions for, for the most part.
Mr. Chairman, I, I 100% agree with that. My, my context of my comments was not to exclude them, but, you know, we had a, a concern this year. They had a concern and, and they brought it to us and, and so we want to make sure that, you know, that we certainly want them at the table. That's, you're right, it's been a 30-year commitment. We don't want to exclude anyone from the conversation. But what we do want to do is extend the, extend the opportunity to have conversations, see what we can do to, to, to support it and make sure it, it continues to happen year in and year out because it's a great event for this community.
Well, I think if we have a cause that's great enough, that benefits the city, amenity that the whole public can, uh, put their arms around, um, that gives, you know, it's the carrot. We don't have a carrot now. They're kind of a, it's like a ship without a rudder. And, um, we need to put a rudder back on that ship. Anyhow.
Mr. Pickens?
Oh, I'm good.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Harvey.
You know, I, I run a lot of festivals and have for years in the west end of the county. And, um, you know, um, I'm given a budget. I'm very transparent. And it's not a profit center for me. It goes back into the general fund when there's money left over and, um, or it goes for something like Commissioner Lible said. If there's something, an item that needed to be bought for housing of equipment, we do that. So I, I think it's very important that if you're coming to our, our town, if you're coming to the city or any municipality, your books need to be open and that needs to be shown if you're asking for partnership. And where does the profit go to? What's the cause that we're trying to get done here? We're trying to better our community and, believe me, there's plenty of things we can do to better our community. So, um, I'm just gonna throw that out. I mean, I, I do that in the west end and have for years, so just wanted to share that with you.
I, I would like to add, I would say that we agree with that. Um, I think there should be a level of transparency with the only organization that we have. I think to go with what Commissioner Lible and, and really what you're saying too, Commissioner Harvey, is the fact that we have, and the mayor, we have to decide, uh, moving forward, where do we do with the Blue Crab? And I think overall, we have to decide as a body, is there something that we want to join together to promote Putnam County, the city of Palaca as a whole, that has nothing to do with Blue Crab? Um, and if that means that both bodies are willing to put, um, not only in-kind services on the line, but money as well, as well as joining with Kauai and its Rotary and all these other civic organizations and doing something collaboratively that we all joining together, I think that's something we should look into doing it. Uh, but in terms of Blue Crab, you're correct. The mayor's correct. We need to sit down with them as much as we can. I can tell you that we've done that and the mayor's correct. They have chosen not to show us anything. I agree with you, Commissioner. I think that is something that should not be allowed, uh, should not happen, but it's happening. I think as we move forward, I would, and I like what I'm hearing, 'cause I hear two county commissioners saying they want to partner with us, uh, possibly in doing something for the community to bring back a festival or bring back that atmosphere, I should say, um, that everybody enjoyed going to it, that there was a camaraderie from every entity in the community to make those things happen. So I would gladly, um, support that as well in terms of us doing that and making that something that's a reality. And I think that's something we have to look at, 'cause right now, with them not showing us any of their books, that's not fair to the, um, the citizens of Palaca and, and overall, it's not fair to the citizens of Putnam County at large.
Thank you.
All right. I think that's, pretty much takes care of that. I guess we can move to future meetings. I figure it's gonna be in June, end of June?
Of this year.
Of this year. Anybody wanna chime in? We wanna just pick a date?
I got my calendar.
Now, we're looking at the calendar. I would like to say, I know at the previous meeting, I asked that we get-
Hello? Okay. Um, at the previous meeting, I asked that we get periodic updates prior to coming to these particular meetings and that did not happen. Um, so again, I'd like to, everything that we've discussed tonight, if we can receive at least a monthly update, I'm quite sure there are things happening in the background or there are questions that we could have asked prior to this meeting, um, that would've gave us a lot of more understanding or me myself, I speak for myself. Um, so once again, prior to these meetings, if we can provide these updates, um, or if we can be provided with updates of these things that we can look and do our own research and consulting as well, um, that would be greatly appreciated. 'Cause once again, it has not happened and I've made that request twice.
Okay. All right, so what, we have a date?
We have on June 19th. That's another Tuesday evening. If that's, if that's a good date.
Would y'all rather do it then or on the day that we have a commission meeting and we're already all here? Which would be the 12th or the 26th?
Yeah, you're exactly right.
Okay, we'll say the 26th. That's the end of the month. All those in agreement?
Just to point out, on, um, the 27th is the fact. I don't know. A lot of people are gonna need to travel, um, in the afternoon on the 26th.
Yeah, you might wanna back it up.
Okay. The 12th?
The 12th would be okay with me. So we agree the 12th at 6 o'clock?
Okay, 12th at 6 o'clock.
Now, something comes up. I heard all the county people speaking about it. The city was, you know.
Well, that's- Okay, well, tentatively, that'd be our date. Uh, June 12th, 6 o'clock. All right, uh, with that, I'll start with, uh-
Let's start with, let's start with staff first, if we can.
We'll check over from here.
I got you. Mr. Diggers? I don't see Mr. Smith. We have anything from the county clerk's side? Team counsel, Mr. Manning?
I have nothing.
Mr. Holmes?
Nothing.
Two lawyers, no comments?
Good day.
Means you saved it all for me. Suggs?
First of all, just would like to, uh, welcome, uh, Ms. Logan Becker to the, uh, Palaca family and to Putnam County. So, uh, new financier for the city of Palaca. Uh, but no, these are good meetings. I think we, uh, cover a lot of ground here and, and I think we, uh, we're all wanting to, wanting the same thing and, and I think Putnam County will benefit, Palaca will benefit, so that's, I think we're good.
Also wanna thank Logan, thank, uh, many of you. This is my first time being a part of this, um, type of collaborative effort. I've seen where something like this is definitely, um, beneficial in other municipalities. But to go to several of you guys' point tonight, which I enjoyed, is when we come back with substantive things. I think to make sure that we put feet to some of the things that visionary-wise you guys have casted, will help these meetings be more productive, um, more people be engaged in them if we come back with solid things. So I'm appreciative tonight that you've given us some direction in terms of bringing back, for example, those urban reserve areas and the assignments that you're giving to the attorneys. Um, and so those are things that I'm most appreciative of, 'cause I think when we put feet to some of the things you guys are casting, it'll make these meetings go more beneficial in the future, so thank you for that.
Thanks, Reynolds.
Nothing, sir.
Commissioner Campbell?
Uh, nothing.
Commissioner Lible?
I'm good.
Commissioner McCaslin?
Nothing.
Commissioner Harvey?
You expect me to say something?
I surely do.
I would be remiss if I didn't say that Sam Deputy has invited all of us to downtown Palaca tomorrow evening for the SBDC meeting. Thank you.
What time is that? 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock.
6, right?
I think it is.
I should've known that, but I didn't ask Sam. Didn't, I was running out the door.
Commissioner Pickens?
I just think the, uh, meetings that we're having are good. Um, do wanna welcome Zaraya. I think, uh, last time you had just been hired, pending contract, as Mayor Hill said. So it looked like the contract worked out, so. And, uh, Matt, I'm not sure if you were on the city side back then, but now you're, uh, on the county side, so. And, uh, and look forward to working with both of y'all. Hopefully, we can move forward, definitely with the, uh, boundaries and the enclaves and, and, uh, and have some, something to look at next month to, uh, start making the decisions to see if these are gonna work for the county and the, uh, and the city, so that's all I've got.
Commissioner Brown?
Well, I sat here and I've listened and some of this stuff I've been hearing for more than 30 years. I hope now that since we have really decided to come together and do something, that we get it done and make it better for all our citizens. And I appreciate, uh, you all coming with us from the county and, and all of our city people coming together with open minds to see what we can do to make the carpe diem of life much better in Palaca. Just do something before I die, that's all I-
Commissioner Turner?
I'm fine, Mayor, thank you.
Commissioner Borum?
Nothing.
Oh, Commissioner got it. I'm sorry, Chairman got it.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I'm just glad that we're all here. I'm glad that we are trying to work together. Not that we weren't working together before, but this is putting a lot of things out on the table that, that needed to be done and we're, we're, we're hashing out a lot of problems that I know Putnam County's had for a while. So I just appreciate it.
And finally, um, I, I applaud everyone. Um, it's not every day that you get two commissions together and they actually handle themselves in a civilized manner, um, with the professionalism and the quorum that's been applied here. And I'm just ready to have some, you know, some action and we can come back with some, some true reports and we can touch on our low-hanging fruit. There's been a lot of transa, transition, um, of positions, both with the city and the county, um, over the past year or so. Um, a lot of vacancies are being filled from both entities. A lot of people are wearing multiple hats. But I, but I think it's a good time for Palaca and Putnam County as a whole. We're starting to see some dirt move. We're starting to see some interest in our community. And, and I really think that if we can all get rid of our archaic ways of thinking and become more progressive in how we approach this community as a whole, thinking not about just today, but about what happens 30, 40, 50 years from now, then we can move this community forward. The key again, and I think Kevin has been excellent for, um, for us in that interlocal is probably, um, the hallmark of what we should continue to do. But we have to continue to provide ease of entry into this community. And if we can be user-friendly to the folks that walk into these, into this community, we can get much more done. It's a lot easier to pool resources than it is to try to do the same thing twice separately. And so that's my comment. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.